Good evening and welcome to the August 14, 2018, regular business meeting of this school district of Indian River County School Board. At this time, I'd ask that you please rise as we are led in the pledge of allegiance by United States Marine Corps Veteran and Representative from District Two, Dale Simcheck.
Thank you. Will you join me in our pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and hurrah. Okay. And now it's time for the adoption of the orders of the day. Are there any items a board member wishes to have moved from consent to action?
Consent C to action, please.
All of Consent C. Okay. Consent C to action. Any others?
I'll make a motion to adopt the orders of the day, moving Consent C to action item A. Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, four zero. At this time, we will do presentations. Dr. Randell, you're recognized for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd actually like to turn the floor over to Kristin Maddox, our Public Information Officer. We have two videos that we'd like to share with you about some events that have occurred in the recent times here in Indian River Schools.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Randell said, we have two videos tonight. One is from the Treasure Coast Technical College Ribbon Cutting Ceremony that occurred last week, and the other one is our first day of school video. So, the first day of school, several members of the district distributed to as many schools as we could possibly get to that morning, and got as many precious moments of all of our kids that we could, and put it together in this video. So, I hope you enjoy both of them. Thank you.
This is one of the most exciting days I've had in my life. This is a culmination of a dream. It is a vision which Dr. Randell has had, it's a vision I have had for many years, and it meets a real need for the community.
I think Treasure Coast Technical College represents a great opportunity for our community. This is something that's probably long overdue. Treasure Coast Technical College will offer a high-demand, high-paying job training for our citizens, both our high school students and our adults.
This is something that we see as an opportunity for our community, because we see it as a great opportunity that they can come here to the technical college and they can get a career in a year. They can actually start working within a year of attending the college here.
So, today at our ribbon cutting ceremony, we had several of the board members here present, and we also had a student testimonial by one of our practical nursing students. People were welcomed to tour the campus, and they were able to go through and see a lot of our different classrooms and some of the other programs that we also offer, such as practical nursing, nursing assistant, medical assisting, phlebotomy, GED, and ESOL.
So, this is a highly technical skill set that we're training our students in. It's not your grandfather's vocational college. For example, in the welding program, you have to learn how to weld on a virtual welder. Technology actually comes first. It's a big part of what we do here at Treasure Coast Technical College.
Today is such an exciting day in the school district of Indian River County. I am currently standing in the welding lab in our instructional technology building, suited up, ready to go. Earlier today, I had the opportunity to try out some virtual welding, and I cannot wait for the students of Indian River County to be in this classroom, learning skills that will take them to the next level of opportunity in their lives.
The opportunities are phenomenal. With the success of this, obviously, we'll be able to grow. This is just the very first steps on what we hope will be a very successful college here in Indian River County.
On Monday, August 13, the school district of Indian River County welcomed back students to their first day of school of the 2018-2019 school year. Dr. Randell started off the school year greeting bus drivers at 5:00 a.m. and riding the first route to pick up some very special early morning passengers. As the school day started at Sebastian River High School, we were joined by the Director of the Office of Safe Schools, Damian Kelly, as he toured our campus to see our security updates and thank our school resource officers for their hard work and dedication. At our elementary schools, parents were dropping off their younger students and wishing them well on their first day. Hugs, pictures, and happy tears were shared with each other before embarking on a day that was sure to be an adventure. Dr. Randell visited individual classrooms at several schools, where he was able to speak to students who were all very excited to be back to school, back with their friends, and ready to start a new year, thanks to our administrators, teachers, and staff. We are excited to see what's in store for the 2018-2019 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes the presentations.
Thank you. All right. And now on to citizen input. Up first, Constance Peterson, speaking on minority achievement, followed by Liz Cannon. That's it. Ms. Peterson, you're welcome. You're recognized for three minutes.
Thank you. Probably won't be that long today. I'm here to speak, continue to speak about minority achievement in Indian River County. And I'm not gonna preach, but I'll say a little bit. To whom much is given, much is required. Just want to remind the board that the citizens of this county have elected you to do a hard task, but we do put our hope and trust that you would do what is right by our citizens, and not just some citizens, but all citizens. Last week I spoke, last month I spoke about the minority achievement rate. I haven't heard anything, haven't got a response, written in my emails, but I'm hoping that that is still part of your goals to work on. When I look at the mission statement, it said about educating all students with excellence, and I hope that's a priority for this county still. You made a vow to honor and to respect this mission, and hopefully that'll be part of what we look forward to this year, the school year. I look at the number of black APs at the elementary school, since Ms. Baltho has left, there are zero. We have zero black APs at elementary school, and that's a concern with some, especially at that level, age level. We need to have representation. I also look at the number of minority teachers being hired, and we are low across the board at all schools. I know we have recruitment plans in place, don't know how they're working, but we definitely need to be looking at how effective those plans are. Please don't forget the strategic plan. I'm saying please don't forget, because I may not be here much longer speaking at many more meetings, and I'm hoping that more people will come. So, let's not forget the plans that we have put in place in the strategic plan, and that we said we're gonna do that, we're gonna look at regarding minority achievements, and that's what I wanted to say tonight. And if I don't see you, look for an email from me, and I look forward to speaking with you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Thank you for your comments. Up next, Ms. Liz Cannon.
After viewing today's workshop regarding health insurance, I feel it's important to make some clarifications about our insurance fund. First, it has been repeatedly stated that we did not raise our insurance rates for six years prior to the enormous increase in December of 2016. Using information from my own payroll stubs and recent contracts, I can prove this inaccurate. Rates have increased on an overall premiums by an average of 12% over the past seven years. During that time, the board contribution has increased by 6%, and the employee family, which is what I have used, on the high plan, has increased by 18%. I would be happy to share my figures with you, just email me. Second, the statement the board is subsidizing the health insurance plan is blatantly false. Health insurance is part of the fringe benefits package negotiated in good faith between the school district of Indian River County and the unions. It is a standard part of our collective bargaining agreement to which both sides participate in and agree to. This is not a subsidy. It is part of a benefits package that has been agreed. In actuality, the last increase occurring on December of 2016 was in fact not agreed to, but rather imposed upon teachers of Indian River County. Additionally, the $27 per employee per month additional payment for nine months was the board committed to at that impasse hearing. It was also not a subsidy. The board agreed to add that amount in order to meet in the middle, but not commit to increasing the overall board contribution. The percentages of contributions are negotiable each year. Therefore, if you do not agree with it now, perhaps you should not have agreed to it then. As far as trends predicted, even the actuaries state the trend data is speculation. Each of the trends Aon has predicted has been considerably above the actual trends. I want them to be conservative in their predictions, but sometimes, we can be a bit overly conservative. While the negative trend that our fund has been experiencing over the past few years has contributed to reaching safe harbor two years ahead of schedule, remember, it is also the employees who have been more cautious in going to the doctor due to these increases in recent years. There was a 20% decline for instructional personnel who participated in the high plan from three years ago, while the middle plan saw an increase of 14%, and the lowest plan saw an increase of 11%. That means employees have higher deductibles and more money coming out of their pockets. The fund pays out significantly less when people have higher deductibles. This is one of several reasons why the trend was so low. Another reason is that the peak of the negative trend in June of 2017, there was also a corresponding increase in utilization at the clinic, which showed the highest utilization of the year at that time. So, please don't pat yourselves on the back for pulling your employees out of the deficit. The employees paid their fair share of that. As a matter of fact, we paid what we promised to pay.
Thank you for coming out. Thank you for, please, presentations are over. That's when we have applause. Thank you for coming out, and thank you for your comments. We are now on the consent agenda. This time, the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Mrs. Simcheck with a motion. Mrs. Justice with a second. Would you like to speak to your motion, ma'am?
No, thank you, sir.
Your second, ma'am.
No, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, four zero.
Mr. Chair.
Ah, yes. You are recognized, Dr. Randell.
Thank you. If I might, with your action of approving the consent agenda, we have actually made two appointments that I'd like to draw some attention to. The first is the appointment of a new principal at the Wabaso School. So, I'd like to ask Rick Bartman to come to the podium. Mr. Bartman is now the new principal at the Wabaso School. I actually know Mr. Bartman from several, several years ago, when both of us were working in Brevard County. I never worked alongside Mr. Bartman, but did know of him and heard of his great work as a classroom teacher, and then assistant principal, and then principal. And we were very fortunate that someone with his skill set and qualifications was available to take over at the Wabaso School. We have invested greatly in the students at the Wabaso School, and we want to make sure that the work that we have done there continues to grow, and we think that Mr. Bartman is the person to do that. So, welcome, Rick.
Thank you, Dr. Randell and members of the board. I began my career in special education as a teacher. As I progressed up the administrative ladder, I've never forgotten my kids in special education. I always strive to ensure that each student in my care reaches for what may seem impossible, but with the right support and encouragement, makes a bright future possible. Dr. Pierre Endozy has left a high bar for students and faculty and me, but I commit to you that at Wabaso School, we will not stop until each student is served with excellence always, in all ways. I stand here this evening with enormous gratitude that you have asked me to join you as part of your school and community, and I promise to serve with fairness, honesty, but most especially humor. I look forward to our work together as we serve the students of Wabaso School, and thank you so much.
Congratulations, Rick. Congratulations.
Welcome, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you very much.
Tomorrow morning, right?
Congratulations.
Zero dark.
Now, I'd like to ask Tracy Simonton to come on up to the podium. Tracy has just been appointed as the new Director of Food and Nutrition Services. Tracy's one of our own. She's been working with us for about 17 years, and she started on the line as a cook in one of our school kitchens, and has risen her way all the way up to the top position in food nutrition services. Tracy.
Thank you, Dr. Randell. As Dr. Randell had stated, I did start out in 2001 as cafeteria cook at Dodger Town Elementary School. My vice principal, in fact, was Mr. Teske, so I've known him for many years. Once a vacancy at Dodger Town for a manager became available, I applied for that and became manager for about five years. Then I shifted my attention toward going a little bit further. What's the complete picture of the child nutrition program? I accepted a position as the application audit clerk, so I was able to assign the meal benefits to the children. From there, I moved up to the food service specialist where I just left, and I was able to work alongside with Mr. McCarty on several of the programs that he had in the works, such as the summer feeding bus. So, I look forward to carrying on the legacy of a great food service program, and I appreciate the opportunity, and I am so glad of the confidence Mr. Teske has shown in giving me this opportunity. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations, Tracy.
Good luck. Congratulations.
That concludes my interruption.
Okay. No. It's a great interruption. And it was in order, so there you go. Okay. All right. Now, we have, or Consent Item C, which has been moved to the action agenda. As we move through our action agenda. Mr. Cersei, you asked at this people, would you like to explain?
Yes, my question is one of the usual ones that I ask. On, I guess, page 12, 12, we've got an insurance certificate there that supposedly covers us, but our name is not even mentioned in it, and that needs to be a part of it. It's listed as the certificate holder's Vero Beach Facility Operations. Is that a corporation that we own?
No, sir.
Okay. That's, that's a problem. Now, what you do about it, I don't know, but we need to have a certificate that shows that our, our folks are insured as per the contract.
Mrs. Dampier, do you have anything to add?
I'm gonna ask Dr. Mike Arnett to come up.
Dr. Arnett, you are recognized.
Actually, the certificate does show that the district is insured in there. It was approved by the risk management. If you'd like me, I'll show you where that's written there. We don't have it.
It says, "And the school board is included."
Are we the certificate holder? I see all that stuff. I'm telling you, this is the certificate holder.
This is the risk management that was accepted.
That's not accepted.
That's, we told the risk management.
We'll check with the risk management. They approved all the contracts for liability insurance.
So, I do see where the school board, it says the school board of Indian River County is included as additional insured in accordance with the policy provisions of the general liability policy.
Right.
So, that's where we're listed?
That's the area that Mr. Dr. Arnett pointed to, that risk management pointed him to.
Certificate holder is not us. It's somebody else. Or other insured, additionally insured. You gotta be the certificate holder, be additionally insured. I know it's got it written in there, but it's, it's not right. And if that's what the risk manager said, I don't, she might want to relook at that. And as is the case in some of the other contracts we have over there, we don't have the certificates attached. Only one I brought out was C, but the other ones that require additional insured and certificate holder, they're not in here, so I don't know what they look like, and that's unfortunate. Hamlin, Hamlin.
Mrs. Simcheck.
Is the attorney, you know, I would, I would...
I would assume the attorney's looking through her.
Yes. The way it's listed, that is that acceptable on page 12 to 12, where it lists the certificate holder's Vero Beach Facility Operations, but in the description, it adds us.
Yeah. Without speaking to risk management, I'm not sure what they've approved. I can't speak to that question. I don't know why the, why we're not listed also under the certificate holder category. There might be, there might be a reason why, I just, I can't speak to that tonight, I'm sorry.
It would be, Mr. Chair, you are recognized.
It'd be real good if we knew what those reasons were, but dealing with this on a regular basis, I just know that that's, that's not, that doesn't cover us.
Mr. Cersei, ma'am?
Yes.
Are you going to make, I mean, I would support a motion if you'd like to table this for the next agenda meeting, if that's something that you would be comfortable with, that's...
Well, we need to have it, and if the superintendent feels like this is what, this is what he wants to have, it doesn't cover me. I would thank you for your suggestion. I'd be happy to make a motion that we postpone this until the next meeting, so that we can have the facts as they need to be.
Okay. Second, second for discussion.
I'll second that.
Dr. Randell, no, I, yeah, I got it, sorry.
Oh, you really, on my goodness.
Look at that. I can do that. I get to do very few things, but that's one of those. Okay, so, second for discussion. Dr. Randell, is that, is this something that would be mission critical or would hold up?
I would have to ask Dr. Arnett to weigh in. This is for these clinical nurse assistant, certified nurse assistant students to do their clinicals, and so I, you know, when does that process usually begin?
This one here is for adult ed, the technical college. They currently are doing them. We have other agreements that they work off of, so it would not impact immediately with the adult, the technical college, the CNA program.
So, it could be tabled. Gotcha. Postpone. Thank you, Mr. Cersei, for making the appropriate motion to postpone and not table. And at second, would you like to speak to that further motion?
Yep. I would. When does the current certificate expire, the one that we have in place now that you're working under? October?
October 1st.
The, the current contract, actually, the original contract that they had, had no termination date on it. They've been working off of one without termination.
The insurance certificate that we have in place now that you're operating under?
It is the one you see right there.
So, it's 10/1?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're covered until 10/1 with the old certificate, right?
Correct.
Okay. Then my motion would be a good one, I think.
Okay. That's reasonable, and it's seconded.
Thanks to Ms. Justice, by the way.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. I have no wish to speak to my second. Would anybody like to further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The item is postponed until our next meeting. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Arnett. Action Item A, approval of public hearing date for adoption of revised Code of Student, or Code of Student Conduct Handbook effective for 2018-2019 school year. Dr. Randell, you're recognized to present the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the workshop on July 24, the board gave direction to consider adding the statutory definition of gang-related activity to the definitions section of the Code of Student Conduct. Tonight, we are asking approval to set a public hearing regarding this additional language for September 25, 2018.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mrs. Simcheck moves approval. Mrs. Justice with a second. Would you like to speak to your motion, ma'am?
No, thank you.
Your second.
No, sir.
Any further discussion? Mr. Cersei, you are recognized, sir.
Did we, did we have to reprint the entire Code of Conduct, or just, we were gonna add a label, I thought, to the one that we already have printed, right?
Dr. Randell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We printed the Code of Conduct and distributed as it was, as it was approved previously.
Okay.
If, after the public hearing, the board adopts this change, we would just print a new page to send home with the students and put online.
We wouldn't print a new?
No, sir. We do not plan on printing a new book. We do not.
Okay. Addenda. Okay. Okay, that's all we got. Okay. Motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, four zero. Action Item B, approval of the 2018-2019 Title IV Part A Student Support and Academic Enrichment SSAE Grant. Dr. Randell, would you please present the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In Action Item B, we are seeking approval for the plan for the Title IV Part A funds. These are... These are federal grant funds that can be spent on measures to improve safe and healthy school conditions for student learning and the use of technology. Total cost of the plan is two hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
Okay. You've heard the item. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Mrs. Justice moves approval.
Second.
Mrs. Simcheck with a second. Would you like to speak to your motion, ma'am?
No, sir.
Your second, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Mr. Cersei, I recognize for a question, a series of questions.
Have a question. I, I noticed just, you know, I don't go through and add all these things up, but how did we come up with the sixteen thousand dollars down there? I guess it's online, well, seventy-two hundred. Indirect cost, five point eight two percent. How did we come up with those numbers?
Dr. Rendell?
I'll ask Mrs. Dampier if she wants to weigh in on that.
I'm gonna ask Ms. Karen Mallett to come up, as the federal, Director of Federal Programs.
She's the federal programs director, so.
She knows.
On an annual basis, the Finance Department submits to the Comptroller's Office a plan for indirect cost rates. Our approved rate based on Plan B is five point eight two percent. Certain federal grants have certain limitations as far as what we can charge for indirect cost, but that is an approved rate that the district has submitted and been approved by the state.
Has this already been submitted to the state?
The budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, on a preliminary basis, pending board approval.
With a little country boy math that I do, that number is, I don't know, it's...
Sure. So, when you look at how you figure indirect cost, all our object codes within the grants that have a function of six, so if you go down, I don't have line numbers on mine, but for instance, non-capitalized furniture, do you see the object code? It's the one, two, third, fourth row down for a total of ten thousand dollars. You would have to deduct that ten thousand dollars off the total grant allocation, then figure the five point eight two percent. That is, we don't charge indirect cost for six thousand object codes.
That's a pretty good answer.
Thank you.
Great answer.
That answers my question.
You got it. Anything else? All right.
Thank you, Mrs. Mallett.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action item C, approval of Indian River County two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty School Health Services Plan. Dr. Rendell, would you please present the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item C, we are asking for approval of the School Health Services Plan. This is a two-year plan that covers our partnership with the local Department of Health.
You've heard the description of the item?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
I like the pattern. Okay. Mrs. Simcheck, would you like to speak to your motion, ma'am?
No, I like the collaboration. Thank you to the Health Department, and thank you, Dr. Rendell.
Your second, ma'am.
No, sir.
Huh? Okay. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action item D, approval of agreement for contracted services for a one-year period from December twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, through December eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, between Aon Consulting Incorporated and the school board of Indian River County. Dr. Rendell, would you please present the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item D, we are seeking approval of an extension of our agreement with Aon Consulting to provide assistance with employee health and wellness consulting services, to assist the district in obtaining competitive bids in areas of health and wellness benefits, as well as provide brokerage services for all lines of insurance coverage, assist with plan design, renewal strategies, financial underwriting analysis, and communication to staff. Also, the agreement with Aon Consulting Incorporated operating, operating as Aon Hewitt for employee health and wellness consult, benefits consulting services.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Simcheck.
Second.
Mrs. Justice with a second. Would you like to speak to your motion, ma'am?
Yes, I would. First of all, my thanks to Aon. They've done a wonderful job with managing this. The company we had before, obviously, had not. I also want to say that if you, or if anybody had seen the workshop today, that my advice to future boards is to, my advice, and also Aon agreed, that from time to time, as they did the last time, too, we are not, we are a self-insured fund, and that at some other point, we should go out for a request for proposal for fully funded, just to see how the market is, that, that is something that we should always do every couple of years. So, I would support that as a citizen in the future. But I wanted to thank Aon for their services, and I support this item.
Thank you. Your second, ma'am.
No, sir.
Any further discussion? Mr. Cersei, I recognize for a question, or a series of questions.
My recollection was that we had the, our audit committee looked at the same program a year ago and recommended that instead of going with a commission basis for these folks, to go with a flat fee. And it makes so much sense to go with a flat fee. And I don't know if we can, this is just a one-year contract, or this is just an extension. I, I would not support it using the commission basis. If we go to a flat fee, or renegotiate, or whatever we need to do, I would support it, but, because they're doing a great job. But, I don't like the commission basis. Basically, the, the higher the premiums are, the more they make, and that doesn't add up to this old country boy. So, I wouldn't be able to support it using the commission basis that we're paying them on.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, sure.
Mrs. Justice.
Sure, thank you. It was my hope, and, and, and that we would have the audit committee coming and doing a report, and perhaps it would have happened today. We had a workshop, and it's my understanding that some of the members of the audit committee are on vacation and traveling, and, you know, it's a volunteer committee, so I understand that they certainly have lives, and they're busy, and those types of things. So I, I take what Ms. Simcheck has said, and what Mr. Cersei has shared as well, and this is a one-year contract, and I think it's something that we need to analyze further in the future, and I'll make sure to make a note of that.
Mrs. Simcheck.
I did some research on that. I'm glad you said that. And that's why I'd hoped that, and had spoke about, I had heard that the audit committee had said that, that they wanted to see it done that way. Well, it's, it's rough, because the audit committee made recommendations, staff heard them, they're not going to implement them until they bring them back to the board. So that was why I was always pushing for, the audit committee should come and give us the recommendations, because then we can direct staff, because that should be our job, not the audit committee telling staff what to do. There is some philosophies, I did call Saint Lucy, they are fully funded, so they couldn't give me much information, but there's two, there's two philosophies. If you did a commission-based, and again, you know, there is pros and cons of both. If you do a commission-based, such as we have, then that handles the managing, and, and, boy, do we manage, so now I hate to say this, but that payment of the commission is for the three sets of, not to sound like a broken record, but three sets of type of insurance. And then, single, employee with husband, employee with family, and all that type of configuring. So there's a commission-based, then there's also a flat fee. And the flat fee, you, you know, if you based on so many employees, and our employees go up, then that will, that flat fee will go up. So, in lieu of no information, Mr. Cersei, I have no problem, and, and again, I'm not gonna hear this next, next year, but we are speaking to, I hope, the, the masses, and to a board member here that will be, that I will support, because of the wonderful work they've done so far, I will support this year extension, but highly recommend probably after that report, and then having it come back contracted both ways. The company I did ask today can do either, they can quote either, but if we like, or if they like the other board. So I, I will support it for this year, but I just hope that people do ask for it both ways, because there are pros and cons to both. And then, of course, like I said, follow up with that RFP.
Mr. Cersei.
I do have a question, because I, I like the fact that we're on the ball, and we're getting this item on the agenda now, because I noticed that it begins, the contract renews December twelfth of two thousand and eighteen through December eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Why are we making this decision tonight? That should be another board that makes that decision.
Mr., or Dr. Rendell, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the reasons is we're about to enter open enrollment, and we wanted to make sure that we had all of this set, you know, put to bed before we go through the open enrollment process.
What does this have to do with the open enrollment? We're already under contract with them, right?
Correct.
I, I won't support it the way it is, but...
Okay.
...we've got the votes to do it anyway, so.
Sure.
And that's, and, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, and, and that's not saying anything bad about the job these folks are doing, I just think from a business standpoint, it needs to be on a, a flat fee basis, and there's plenty of time to renew the contract, and I'm not sure about the open enrollment period, how that would actually affect us if we did not approve this tonight. Okay. Got a question.
Okay. Actually, I'd like to comment.
Okay.
If it's okay.
Okay.
Actually, you know, I, I find myself agreeing with Mrs. Simcheck. This is something that's been, you know, in our workshop today, and over the years, we've looked at becoming fully funded. One of the things you have to look at when you're fully funded is, there are two things. One, you don't have to fund the safe harbor, so there are actually some cash flows that could be freed up there, that could be applied to premiums. Two, the school district is in a business that is perhaps, the school district is not well-suited to, and, and there have been problems in the past, and now we have a better consultant, and we don't seem to have those same problems, but, you know, we become risk managers and, and all sorts of things, and, again, this is something for a future board, which, which, speaking very directly to that, I think that it would be somewhat unfair for this board to literally, on their first night, ask the new board to approve or disapprove a contract. I do actually agree with Mr. Cersei on the idea that it should go to fee-based rather than commission basis, because that's a good recommendation, but without the opportunity to negotiate back and forth, and also entering into open enrollment. As, as someone who's had to oversee open enrollment and things like that, that's, it's something one assumes there's a relationship beyond open enrollment, so for that reason, I'll be supporting it. So, with the idea that hopefully, future boards will look at becoming fully funded, and perhaps getting the school district out of the health insurance prognostication industry. And with that, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three one. Action item E, approval of City of Sebastian Police Department School Resource Officer Agreement, SRO, for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Dr. Rendell, would you please present the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we've stated before several times, we are very fortunate to live in a community that our law enforcement agencies work together with us to provide safety and security for our students and staff. Tonight, action item E, we're seeking approval of the agreement with the Sebastian Police Department to provide school resource officers at Pelican Island Elementary and Sebastian Elementary School. It is a cost-share agreement of fifty percent with, with the City of Sebastian and the Police Department for fifty percent of the salaries. The total cost to the district is forty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mrs. Simcheck with a motion. Mrs. Justice with a second. Would you like to speak to your motion, ma'am?
No, I'm just grateful to Chief Morris, and, and all of her staff, and the, and the officers that hail from Sebastian, as well as the other law enforcement agencies who have entered into these type of agreements with us. We do appreciate their services. They serve not only as, you know, safety officers for law enforcement, but in many cases, especially at this level, which is two elementary schools in my district, they serve as mentors and to the students. So I am very, very excited about that collaboration as well, and not just for the safety issue, so I thank the, the City of Sebastian Police Department for, for this endeavor with us.
Would you like to speak to your second, ma'am?
Yes, sir. I would echo Ms. Simcheck's thoughts. We are now entering into an agreement, we'll, we'll have an SRO at the schools in Sebastian, from, by Sebastian Police. But I would like to say that even before this, Sebastian Police Department has been very visible in all of those schools, without an agreement, without, just because they genuinely care about their community and their, and the students, and, you know, so hats off to them. This solidifies this relationship, and will definitely ensure that someone will be there while the school is operating, but I hope that all the other officers continue to show up and stop by and, and visit with the kids, because it's a pretty awesome relationship they have with their schools.
Yeah. Any further?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
And I think they won the lip sync contest.
It was pretty awesome.
(laughing).
It was pretty awesome.
(laughing).
Second.
Okay.
Sorry, that's, we are, we are on the original motion, we are back on the motion. I, I would like to also thank the City Council of Sebastian for agreeing to the cost share, because although it's outstanding that Chief Morris was able to provide the, the officers, it's also important that we have a, a good relationship in, in financial cost sharing with the City Council of Sebastian, so thank you to those elected officials. Anything further? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action item F has been deleted. Action item G, approval of modified statewide mutual aid agreement, SMAA, dated February twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Dr. Rendell, would you please present the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The State of Florida Emergency Management Act, Chapter two-five-two, authorized the state and its political subdivisions, or one of those, to provide emergency aid and assistance in the event of a disaster or emergency. And this agreement, actually, it's a statewide mutual aid agreement, replaces the two thousand and one agreement, or two thousand and seven agreement. Mr. Teske is gonna give a little bit of background on what, what this really means.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board. The statewide mutual agreement was up for revisions this, this summer, so it was brought back to the surface. We did some research, and the, the school district hasn't participated as far back as two thousand and one, but that, that doesn't mean that the district disagreed nor the county. This is voluntary. This is a county-to-county agreement within the state of Florida. You can opt out at any time. It's basically just kind of circling the wagons and your resources to see what you can do to help other districts in non-statewide emergency events, such as brush fires, or if you did have a fire event at a school, or a water event, so it's not declared a state emergency. If you want to reach out to the other districts to see if they can help, this will allow us, and, and it puts us basically out there that we're willing and able to assist and accept aid from the other counties in our area and across the state.
You've heard the end. Mrs. Justice moves approval.
Second.
Mrs. Simcheck with a second. Would you like to speak to your motion, ma'am?
Would you like to speak to your motion, ma'am?
No, sir.
Your second, ma'am. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, four zero. Action item H, approval of the 2018-2019 Transportation Service Agreement Renewal. Dr. Rendell, would you please present the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item H, we're seeking approval for the agreement with Kids and Nurses PPEC Center. This agreement includes use of the district's transportation services from school sites to provide therapeutic and nursing services for students identified through their IEP. Mr. Teske, anything to add?
No, sir.
You've heard an explanation?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Chik.
Second.
Mrs. Justice with a second. Would you like to speak to your motion, ma'am?
No, thanks.
Your second, ma'am.
No, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, four zero. Action item I, approval of utility easement deed number 2018 EG 229 to the City of Vero Beach for Treasure Coast Technical College. Dr. Rendell, would you please present the item?
Thank you, Mr. Frost. In action item I, we're seeking approval of an easement with the City of Vero Beach for the property along the southeast edge of the site of the Treasure Coast Technical College.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Simczek with a motion. Mrs. Justice with a second. Would you like to speak to your motion, ma'am?
No, thank you, sir.
Your second?
No, thank you.
Mr. Cersei?
No.
I'd like to go into some long, complicated legal explanation of deeds and rights of way, but.
We could go.
I'm going to.
I'm going to.
If you want.
We could talk about the plat. Yeah. We could go through the legal script if you'd like.
Very good. Have that read into -- just kidding. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action item J, approval of release of final payment to One Call Property Services Incorporated for the Felsmere Elementary 700 Building HVAC improvements project, SDIRC 10-0-02017JC. Dr. Rendell, would you please present the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item J, we're seeking approval for the release of final payment in the amount of $29,815.90 to One Call Property Services Incorporated for the Felsmere Elementary 700 Building HVAC Improvement Project. The original project amount total was $423,994. Came in at $399,409.2. So, the unused portion of the contract totals $24,484.98. And that will be put back into the capital projects budget.
Outstanding.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Simczek with a motion. Mrs. Justice with a second. Would you like to speak to your motion, ma'am?
Just that I always love to see projects come in under price and that money going back into our capital projects fund. So, this is just another job coming in under and I'm happy to see that always.
Your second, ma'am.
Keeping students' learning environments safe and healthy. It's very important.
And cool.
And cool. Mr. Cersei, anything further other than cool?
No. I'll say that, you know, this is something that's kind of been moving through the pipeline for a while and it's good. There's air quality issues and this will improve the air quality and student comfort and safety and those are key issues for us. So, it's good to see the project finished in time for students. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we have concluded our action agenda. Dr. Rendell, you're recognized for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank all of the teachers for their hard work last week preparing for this week. I visited many training sessions last week where teachers were working hard to get ready for this week. And I was amazed at how many of them were attending sessions. We had a training in this room here that was almost standing room only. And, you know, they'd come back from their summer break and, you know, sometimes you think their highest priority might be to be in their room, getting their classroom ready, their materials ready and things like that. And it was just great to see them committed to training and professional development before we started this week. And the last two days have actually been very, very smooth. We've had a great start to the school year. I've been out at a lot of campuses. All the different district leaders have been out at campuses trying to show our support for the action that's happening in the classrooms. And I've been amazed at just, again, how the energy, excitement, enthusiasm of all of our students and staff. We certainly have had a great start to the school year. Our job now is to maintain that momentum.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. We are on to item nine in the agenda, discussion. No member placed anything on the agenda for discussion, but at this time, if any member wished to raise any issue for discussion? Hearing none. Moving along to school board member matters. Mrs. Justice, you're recognized for school board member matters.
Thank you very much. I am so excited for the start of school, not only because my four kids are back in school. I was thrilled to have them back in school. It was fun to have them home this summer. They are busy, busy people. And I went to back to school orientation and then dropped them off at school and said, "God bless you to all of their teachers," because we truly appreciate them. Teachers are my partner in raising my children. During the school year, they spend more time with my kids than I do. I do not take that partnership lightly or their service and dedication to my children lightly. So, just a big thank you, because when you ask, I think it was Principal Kelly Bastero was saying today, someone once asked her how many kids she had and she said, "698." And they said, "No, how many children do you personally have?" And so, I know that our teachers and our principals think of their students as their children. So, thank you for that. I have visited some schools already and I will continue to visit schools this week and throughout the year. And I have seen kids knowing where they need to go. Everything's very organized. It's been wonderful. So, thank you for always welcoming me in your classrooms and onto your campuses. I want to just take a moment to invite everyone out to a very special event, if you have time. Our first Tunnel of Hope in partnership with the Executive Roundtable and Kids at Hope will be on August 20th at 8:15 at Dodger Town Elementary School. This is a really exciting event where everyone gets to come out and we line the hallways and we get to give kids high fives and we hold signs and we tell them that we are committed to the fact that every child is capable of success, no exceptions. And I'm proud to be a member of a board that believes that and to be able to serve in a school district in a community that I believe is truly dedicated to that goal. And I'm just excited about Tunnel of Hope. So, if you have time, 8:15, that's August 20th, please come out and celebrate the students of Dodger Town Elementary and let's start off their year with a lot of community support. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mrs. Simczek.
Thank you. Well, yes, and I wanted to also thank the support services, you know, obviously the teachers, the parents and all the support, but support services from the food services on down to the bus drivers. And they're starting, their days are earlier and they, as I said, they mentor students as well. So, I'm glad that -- to have them and to have how they have contributed to our students. I've seen cases where certain bus drivers have had, you know, something happen with a student where they have just gone to the end to make sure that student is home safely. So, I just can't tell you how much I value that portion of our district services. I also want to make sure that people are in tune. I know the sheriff has spoke about this, but, you know, those -- the speed zones in front of schools, please, it's very important. A lot of our schools are on busy roads, so please be careful. To me, it's always been, you know, my son graduated, so it's weird, because it was like, "Why is the mall so busy?" Or, "Why is the store so busy?" And, you know, just realizing, oh, yes, everybody's last minute rushing around. But I grew up in, and it's probably hard to tell, but I grew up in New York and it's and.
Because you were a country girl.
A country girl, New York. It was country New York, really. But we never went back to school. I always thought it was so strange that in the hot climate, you go to school and it was later, we kept rolling it back. We keep rolling it back into August. I just couldn't understand, in the hottest state, why are we going to school in August? Because in New York, it's the day after Labor Day and they're practically a first week after school pulling out sweaters and it's very quick to pumpkin time. So, it just, it always, you know, it's still so warm and hot and the kids are back to school. So, you know, it's always been an odd thing to me, but, you know, it's something that it's a transition for families, because and for students to get back in. And I always notice, and I've always noticed with my own son as the parent hat, that teachers are well in tune about that and that they transition the students into that learning mode very delicately. And I appreciate that, because, you know, to take a student that's been off at, you know, Bible camp or camping or, you know, just fun and games and then to get them back, that's a hard thing to do. And it's a hard thing to do for, you know, seven hours a day. So, hats off to the teachers and the way they do what they do and they do it very well. And they do it very well here in this county and I hear that from other counties as well. So, that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Cersei.
Two things. Number one, I went up to Sebastian and viewed the no parking signs out there around the school and they are very unsightly. And I wanted to find out if we have responded to that beautiful lady that came and complained about them, if there's anything we can do about that. I don't have any idea, but.
The Principal Brown was to reach out to her. He did meet with his staff and brainstormed some ideas so that that parking issue wouldn't happen in the near future. So, I'll check in with him.
Good. Good. The other one is not a real pleasant thing, but this is the only place that I know to bring it up. We sit as a collegial body up here and I like to argue with all of you, by the way, occasionally, but an issue has come up that the chairman of the board has on his school district, or not school district, it comes in as school district chairman, some very, very, very negative comments about two school board members. And I'm hurt by them. I'm sorry that I can't live up to your standards, Mr. Chairman, but we are supposed to be to work together as a team. And it just bothers me that this is the area that we use, the whatever you call that thing there, Facebook, to criticize other folks. And I'm here tonight to say, I accept the fact that you don't agree with what I do. I mean, there's some stuff where out of touch board members, that's hurtful. And I'm going to forgive you for saying that. I listened to the preacher on Sunday morning and that's what he said to do. And I tell you what, Sean, that's hard for me to do, Mr. Chairman, but we need to work together. If we have something to say, go in the back room, get the sunshine out and talk about it. But this is unfair to me. It's unfair to the other board member you used in your, this thing. And it's just, it just hurt. But I just said, I'm sorry that it happened, number one, and I forgive you for saying. So, we're going down the trail.
All righty then. Someone's learning how the Facebook works.
Mr. Frost, may I?
Yes.
I just wanted to echo what Mrs. Simczek had said before about support staff. I just wanted to say, at all of the schools that I visited in orientation, custodians were out, like talking to parents and the schools looked so beautiful and they were so clean and well-maintained and I was so impressed by that. So, I just wanted to, you mentioned support staff and it's really true. The schools, it's a school family and we all work together. And without the custodians and the support staff at the school, the school wouldn't be able to function. So, I just wanted to echo that and say thank you to them as well.
Thank you. And I would like to echo what both Mrs. Justice and Mrs. Simczek have said regarding, you know, the teachers and staff. Truly, it does take a team effort and also the administrators and OTAs and PTs and team trainers and coaches and everyone, you know, everyone who's involved in touching a child's life, I think that that's, there are a few higher, more noble purposes. And with that, I would also like to say that it was such an honor to be involved in the opening of the Treasure Coast Technical College. And I would like to, in public, admit that Kristin Maddox beat me on the virtual welder. She got a 96 percent. I got a high B, I got a B, respectable B, but if this public affairs thing doesn't work out, she certainly has a knack for welding. So.
Mr. Frost, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
I know that there were some community members that hadn't been able to make the technical center opening and they weren't able to go on the tour. If they'd like to see the virtual, the welding center or the building tech or any of those areas, how would they go about doing that?
Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely anybody can contact the technical college. If you go to our website and click on the Schools tab, the technical college has its own page and you can contact them and ask for a tour of the school, especially some of the public officials that we invited. I did, you know, when they are subpoenaed that they could not attend, I let them know that they could reach out to Christie Shields, the principal at the technical college, or Dr. Arnett, the director of current technical education, or myself, and we'll schedule a tour for them. But anybody can reach out and go and visit and tour the facility.
Awesome. Thank you.
I've had a similar question. So, thank you for raising it. Thank you for answering it. Dr. Rendell, you're recognized for superintendent's closing.
I have nothing further to add, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anything else for the, go to the district. No further business before us. We are adjourned.